Call the meeting back to one after returning from the executive session. This is to notify you that this is a regular meeting of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee, being held on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 11:21, Ashley Boulevard, New Bedford, Massachusetts. It's now 6:47 PM and is being held in the student forum. As I understand it, Ms. Fredette, we have no public comment for this evening? Next order of business, as Chair, I will step down and the meeting will be turned over to Superintendent Watson as Chairman Pro Temp in order to proceed with elections for the new offices.
Thank you, Ms. Olivera. At this point, I would entertain a motion for a new chairperson. Mr. Barrow?
Carol Pimental.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Shea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. I would now accept a motion for vice chairperson. Mr. Barrow?
Mr. Shea, Michael Shea.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote for Mr. Shea as vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Unanimous vote by both by members of the school committee that Ms. Carol Pimental will assume the responsibility as chairwoman of the district school committee, and the vice chair will be Mr. Michael Shea. Madam Chair, the meeting is yours.
Madam Chair, congratulations to you.
If I could just say it's been an honor and a privilege to have served as Chair for this past year, and I want to thank the committee for the honor of doing that and also for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job during a tough year.
Thank you.
Next time I'll move.
Okay.
We need a motion to make the superintendent secretary.
Make a motion that Mr. Watson be secretary of the regional school committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Okay, reading and acceptance of minutes of the May 13th, 2025 meeting. Committee members have received copies of the minutes of the May 13th, 2025 meeting, excuse me. Request for approval?
So voted.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Request approved. Reports, approval of bills?
Motion to approve.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Strategic Plan 2024 to 2025 Progressive Report 3 is included in your backup material as a copy of the Strategic Plan 2024 to 2025 Progressive Report 3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just take a couple of moments. In your packets is the Strategic Plan for the 2425 school year. This is our final progress report of the year. I just want to take a minute to kind of run through the items and let you know where we are. As you know, all year long, we've been focused on revamping the exploratory model for Chapter 74 programs at Greater New Bedford to ensure greater student opportunity and access to all of our CTE programs. We are currently continuing that work into the next school year, where we expect to have some progress in the fall or winter to present to the committee next year. I'm very proud to report to the committee that in the second areas of redesigning curriculum and accommodations, as well as collaborative educator development and integration, there's been substantial progress around those goals. They've been completed. All educators have gone through an accommodation matrix training, special education and ELL. We have developed a teacher learning walk model that Mr. Williams and the team have developed. We are piloting that model, consistent with our strategic plan for 2526 next year. We'll be updating you at the August meeting of what that plan will actually look like. There's been considerable progress in Objective 2 around inclusive and effective instructional practices and strategies deployed in our classroom. Our team has done exemplary work this year, ensuring that all of our educators have gone through professional development during half-days and the full-day in-service around strategies to improve teaching and learning for all students in the classroom. Objective 3 is a huge objective for the district in our strategic plan, developing and implementing tiered student support services. You may remember in your package, you've seen the MTSS and UDL models that the district is undergoing. There's been a lot of work around professional development. We've had outside consultants that have worked with us to develop what that model looks like. We are rolling it out next year. The staff was briefed by the principal at our June faculty meeting right before the summer. There'll be more work with the administrative team, both at our two end-of-day workshops next week, as well as during our retreat at the end of July. But we are hyped, you know, very focused on making sure that tiered supports are available to all students, and you know that we are contemplating a scheduled redesign for the 2627 school year, which is still a year out, but this will be at the center of that work. And then finally, around Objective 4, all of those initiatives have been completed, and they are designed around strengthening partnerships with our families and the community, not only through our student council, our school council, but also the advisory groups that serve both to the superintendent and to other areas. So we're having a lot of work done around partnership strengthening in our community. We intend to build upon that work, and it's outlined in our strategic plan. This is a summary of year one of the strategic goals, which are virtually all met. In August, I will give you the preview for the 2526 strategic plan. You've already seen it. It was in your package last year, but we've broken that out again for next year's 2526. We'll put a presentation on at our August meeting, so you're prepared with the goals for next year. Thank you.
Update on admissions?
Yes.
Superintendent Watson?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I wanted to put this on the agenda for June. I want to bring you up to speed on where the state of these, of this process is across the Commonwealth, but also to kind of give you some time over the summer to think about the direction you'd like to see the admissions process at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech move. So last month, I told you that I was going to be in Methuen for the vote by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. That vote was taken on May 20th, and statewide, there will be a weighted lottery system for admissions to regional voc tech schools, beginning with next year's admissions cycle. There is a, as I've said last month, in the House budget, there is language for a task force on vocational admissions that passed through the House budget. It is not included in the Senate version of the budget. And so what is happening right now on Beacon Hill is the House of Representatives and the Senate are in conference committee to try and reconcile the differences in their respective budgets. They have to pass one budget that will go back to the governor for her signature, and I'll talk about that in one second. So we have no new information on that. The conference is happening. What happens in the conference committee typically is there are differences in the dollar values and initiatives that may exist between the two budgets, and there's literally going to be a horse trade between House members and Senate members to reach some kind of a compromise on everything that is included in the budget. There is no way to predict or know if vocational admissions will survive that and be included in the governor's budget or not. But I want to mention to you that that is still in play at the moment. Of course, even if it is included in the budget, the governor retains line item veto authority within that budget to which she can act. It could be overridden by a two-thirds vote. We're starting to get a little complicated in the weeds here. We're a ways away from that, and I would certainly update the committee in August, should that be the pathway. What is before us right now, assuming no government action through the budget process, is that there would be a weighted lottery at all regional vocational technical schools. I clarified a little bit earlier with the Chair and Mr. Olivera when we had the meeting. What we had last year was a qualified lottery. Students who had 27 or less unexcused absences, or who were not suspended under the 37H statute for 10 or more days, were qualified to be in our lottery, and would be randomly drew the class. That ended up being about 1,020 of the nearly 1,200 applicants, okay? So almost every student, about 85% of the students who applied here, were in the lottery, right? And there are some preliminary numbers that were collected. I want to talk about that in one second. The weighted lottery is a little bit different, okay? So what's before you in the fall is, these are options, okay? You could throw the whole system out and adopt a blind lottery. That's obviously within your purview. If you choose to stay with a weighted lottery, every applicant who completes an application would be given one opportunity. Think of it as one ball in the lottery, okay? That's a criteria, okay? The second decision you could make is, do you want attendance to be a factor? If you do, then the standard is 27 or less unexcused absences. So any applicant that has 27 or less unexcused absences gets a second ball in the lottery, a second chance to have their name drawn, okay? Then there's the discipline standard, which has been loosened a little bit under the 37H statutes. It's a little bit more loose than 10 or more days. Suspension includes felony convictions. I will get you that language for August specifically, but if a student met that discipline standard, they would get a third opportunity in the ball, in the lottery. And also in the regulations is this idea of student interest. So if a student demonstrated interest in attending a voc tech school, whether that be through a recommendation letter of a school counselor or a teacher, attending an open house, there's a list of four or five different things you could consider to allow the student to meet that standard. If they met that standard, then they would get a third chance. You can select any or all of those criteria for the weighted lottery, and then we would run a random lottery based upon a draw from that point. So I just wanted to take a minute to kind of lay that out to you, that that is what the regulation that passed the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in made. The other thing I want to mention out loud is I am very grateful, as I think I've said over and over again, for the partnership in Dartmouth, New Bedford, and Fairhaven, and we've worked very hard to build that partnership over the last few years. I can tell you that for the first time, all of the student SACD numbers of students who have been accepted in the class of 2029 have been provided to the district. We have preclaimed all of those students, which is something we've normally done in August. We are in the stages right now, so I don't want to share what I've seen as very preliminary numbers out loud on TV, but we will know by the end of the week how many of the students that are currently in next year's freshman class, you know, what their race and ethnicity is, what their income status is, what their IEP or EL status is. And what that is going to do is allow us to properly plan to make sure that the support's in place for those students on day one. That is a necessary step. It is a really important step, and our partners deserve to be commended for their work with us on that. And we spend a lot of time in a hot topic like admissions, talking about, this is about kids, right? On all sides of this. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them, who all responded to my inquiry within hours and directed their teams to provide complete support to the district, and they have all followed through. So I want to say that out loud and express my deep appreciation to do that. I'll be at Fairhaven tomorrow night at their school committee, and I intend to say the very same thing out loud to every school committee, unsupported their superintendent. So thankful for that. That's where the state of admissions is today. What we need you folks to start to do is, what do you want our policy to look like? We have to pass a policy by November 1st of next year, so we will be talking about this again with some detail in August. I will not ask you to vote in August. We'll present options. We'll let you know what numbers look like. In September, we'll have that conversation, and then we would need to approve a policy for Greater New Bedford Voc Tech by our October session, okay? If there are any questions, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer questions of the committee.
Any questions? Right. Policy Subcommittee, I believe. And so, is that going to, having all of us discuss it right away, is that going to go through them first?
Yeah.
Okay. That way more work is done for the product.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next. Superintendent Shado?
So at the end of the year, I always want to just take a minute. I don't want to single anybody specifically out here, but just, you know, really grateful for the work of our team for the entire year. I think last Friday's graduation was a testament to the staff pulling together to put a real, a real proper send-off for our kids, and that extends far deeper than the folks that are in this room that lead this district every single day. The work that's carried out is done by a lot of folks in the administrative team, by teachers, lead teachers, who are with their kids and pushing that ceremony across the finish line. So just very grateful for our team as we wrap another year up for their efforts this year. And it's not an easy business, as you know, today. There are challenges that we talk about, and, you know, I think our folks have risen to the occasion. They're embracing some new realities in vocational technical education and learning about how to provide different supports for kids, and still showing up every day to really make sure that this work makes a difference in the lives of our kids. And so, very appreciative of the staff.
And I would just like to say that was an excellent send-off to the class of 2025. Very well done.
The belle Victorian speech was remarkable.
Fantastic.
Mm-hmm. She was incredible. Very good.
Okay. The Addison Report, Angela Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll get our presentation up in just a moment. I'd like to dive in, speaking first about the math department. Math department, see illustrated just a moment. I use a tool called iXL Platform to really show the closure of gaps in learning, and each student's progress is monitored monthly. We're seeing great outcomes. It's probably our fourth year using this platform, and you'll see the 1.5 million questions were answered, and almost 75,000 skills were either proficient or mastered among those. The senior statistics students created probability games from around the world. They didn't just present, they were actually teaching, and students and teachers were able to go up to that classroom and partake in the various games that students had created that were very much centered around global culture. Moving on to the science department. Biology teacher Joyce Southworth was nominated for the Master CTE New Teacher Award, a recognition of her skill, commitment, and leadership on multiple district committees. Meanwhile, Heather Mattson continues her second term with the DESI Endcast Assessment Development Committee, helping design statewide assessments. Moving on to the architectural and mechanical design program. Special shout-out to James Anister, probably going to be president someday, amazing youngster, smart kid. He won Golden Architectural Drafting at the Skills USA States, so he'll be heading down to Atlanta to represent Greater New Bedford Voc Tech in Nationals. Really excited about that. We also have a freshman from Medical going down as well, as well as one of our state officers. Moving on to the engineering and robotics, the Cuddy Hunk Wind Collaborative received an additional $68,000 grant, allowing our students to travel to the island this summer. It's a really awesome experience for them. They'll conduct underwater inspections using ROVs and lead wind energy tours for the public. And at Skills USA, students Astrid Lopes, Aiden Cardozo, and Destiny Belair and Silver in Engineering Technology, which is an incredible feat, especially if you go up there and see the competition that's up there in Engineering and Robotics. For them to have done that well is really amazing. Moving on to Metal Fab and joining and welding, led by student Landon Cananzi, who you see illustrated right there. Students are finishing a custom bike rack for the Lloyd Center. They also created a handcrafted fire pit, which raffled off during the Teacher Appreciation Week in April. I'm sorry, first week of May. Also, this team of Metal Fab students continue to support real-world projects, including safety railings and signage in multiple languages, in collaboration with visual design. If you go down and you see that illustration, young lady bending some steel there. And the next one should show us some signage, pretty sure. Actually, we'll move on to our stationary engineering kids. These youngsters right here, awesome kids, they got their second class fireman's license, which makes them very, very employable at the moment. Those youngsters are Bryce, Isaiah, Amanda, Elton, Carlos, and Yamari. And Yamari's actually a leader on our student council, so those are all awesome youngsters who have an important piece of paper in their hands. These students are building these certifications needed to step confidently into essential skills careers. We'll move on to visual design. This shop worked across departments to design and produce signage for school vehicles, graduation, and safety instruction in multiple languages, as you illustrated there. Their partnership with the Metal Fab program ensures every student can work safely and confidently in shop settings, no matter what their language is. And finally, we'll talk about the assistant principals and the security department. Assistant Principals and Security Team organized eight Saturday detention sessions this year, pretty much as a pilot. We'll be starting that from the beginning of the year, come September, because it was so successful. They were restorative, they were structured and designed to support student growth and behavior, attendance, and academics, and it's a great way to keep kids in the classroom, using a different mode of discipline as opposed to having kids outside suspended. It's a way to keep them in the class as a disciplinary method. On June 7th, Stephanie Rizendi is one of our security officers, led a CPI training, which is a verbal and physical de-escalation training for nine staff, really hoping to get more staff training, especially on the verbal de-escalation, strengthening our capacity to support students with empathy and effective de-escalation. And from the junior banquet to the senior prom, the assistant principal and security teams ensure safe, structured, and joyful events for our students. Also want to thank our class advisors, student council, and the after-prom committee for putting on those amazing events for our youngsters. It also includes the spring fling. The assistant principals and security also led multiple professional learning communities, yeah, learning communities with administrators and guidance, refining our approach to progressive discipline, social-emotional learning practices, and student support. So that's just, you know, a little display of some of the great work and brilliance across our staff and students here at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech. And with that, I will actually close by saying that the girls softball team are in the final four, and they'll be at Dartmouth tomorrow at 3 o'clock against Foxborough. So with that, I yield that. Hoping it'll be nice and sunny out, by the way. Guaranteed.
Thank you.
Guaranteed at this point. Tony Patraka says so.
Okay. Parent communications, Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet are the most recent possum surveys by grade. Again, we've talked about this every other week, all year long, so these surveys are sent biweekly, and these are the responses to the most recent. That's it.
Okay, Superintendent, weekly update?
And as you know, every Monday morning, I send a weekly update to the staff. These are the last four weekly updates. The last one is coming next Monday. Until August.
Old business, vacation day carryover, policy review?
So I just want to take a minute to bring this back to the committee's attention. Last month, you'll remember, we discussed the COVID ending policy on June 30th, 2025, where employees who have accrued vacation time above their caps have been requesting extensions of those limits to the superintendent. As you know, I mentioned last month that, you know, that ability to grant that extension effectively ends with the school committee's policy that on June 30th, 2025, that lapses. Since that policy was implemented and is being prepared to be executed by our business office, I've had a few members of both the GNBEU Unit C, as well as our Teamsters Unit, come to me and express a desire that while they understand the committee's position around vacation carryover, getting under the caps, they were hoping for a little bit more lead time, to which I understand. And so what I want to bring before the committee tonight would be to ask if the committee would consider extending its policy on the COVID leave, to have all staff use that leave no later than October 1st of 2025, rather than June 30th, 2025. And that would only extend to GNBEU Unit C members or the security division. It would not include non-Unit administrators who have significantly more time, and that I would like to direct the business office.
Please, sir.
The Teamsters.
The Security.
Did I not say that?
Security.
Security, I'm sorry, not Security, Teamsters. Non-Unit administrators would be paid out for time excess of 50 days on June 30th of this fiscal year.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension of the Teamsters till October 1st for their vacation, for their...
In Unit C.
In Unit C. For their vacation time.
We have a second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. A new business, appointment of treasurer and assistant treasurer. Committees have established policy whereby the treasurer and assistant treasurer will be appointed by July 1st of every year. Bruce Olivera is currently the treasurer, and Paul Kitchen is currently the assistant treasurer.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Bruce Olivera as treasurer and Mr. Paul Kitchen as assistant treasurer.
Second?
For July.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Olivera, yeah, thank you. I mean, tonight was...
Thank you all. I'm glad to finally be able to come back again. So glad you had here.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations. Congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you.
Good health. Okay, 2025-26 Standard Subcommittee. Included in your backup material is a couple, yeah, a copy of last year's standing subcommittees. Members should review the memberships and make changes as needed. Any discussion?
I assume if the staff is okay to put her in on the budget, as well as the policy, with the two open positions from New Bedford?
Okay. I'm going to take a vote.
You should take a vote.
All right, someone make a motion to...
Mr. Shea made the motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion passes. Okay, the evaluation of the superintendent director. Mr. Olivera will present the evaluation at the...
Having been Chair when this evaluation took place, I was tasked with the job of doing the evaluation on behalf of the superintendent director, and tabulating all of the input from all of the committee members on the evaluation rating on page 2. Basically, front of the form, the administrator's professional status. This was a, wasn't sure exactly on those. It was a professional status evaluation.
Yeah, so year one, year one plan, year one of two, because now it's fourth year, so.
Okay. So year one self-directed.
Formative evaluation? Yeah. It's not, yeah, formative evaluation.
Okay. All right. So based on the input that we got, starting, we're going to start with standard number one and leave the overall rating the last, if anyone wants to comment, based on the ratings that they gave. So standard one was instructional leadership. We had seven of the members felt that it was proficient, and we had one that was exemplary.
Maybe we didn't have somebody from Dartmouth, maybe Mr. Shea or Mrs., uh, or Dr. Marlon were not able to anticipate. And you can take on our advisement, we don't need to do it tonight, but I, I do think that we should have, have that quantified in the minutes as well.
As part of it.
Sheen, so, I don't know what your feeling is on that.
Was it you? Yeah, I think it was Cindy.
It was Dr. Marlon?
Yeah.
So, so Dr. Marlon, Mrs. Ribero and Mr. Olivera, is that, was that the committee? Your call, so just let me know, we'll put it.
You can just add, you can just add it to this thing so it'll be.
Yeah, I think we should put it on here so we have it.
Because it comes up periodically, who's on what subcommittee, sir?
Okay, motion to close those three names that I just talked about, one from each district, to be on the admissions.
Second, who's the second? All those in favor? Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion passes. Okay, the evaluation of the superintendent director. Mr. Olivera will present the evaluation at the.
All right. Having been chair when this evaluation took place, um, I was tasked with the job of doing the, um, evaluation on behalf of the superintendent director and tabulating all of the, uh, input from all of the committee members, um, on the evaluation rating on page two, basically, um, front of the form, the administrator's professional status. This was a, um, wasn't sure exactly on those. It was a professional status.
Yeah, so year one, year one plan, year one of two, because now it's fourth year, so.
Okay. So year one self.
Formative evaluation? Yeah. It's not, uh, yeah, formative evaluation.
Okay. All right, so based on the, um, the input that we got, starting, um, we're going to start with standard number one and leave the overall rating. I'll ask if anyone wants to comment, um, based on the ratings that they gave. So standard one was instructional leadership. Uh, we had, um, seven of the members felt that the, it was proficient and we had one that was exemplary. On standard number two, this one went over management and operations. Five of the members felt that that was proficient and three of the members, uh, rated that as exemplary. Standard number three reviewed family and community engagement. Seven of the folks, uh, were, uh, rated that as proficient and one as exemplary. And on standard number four, under professional culture of the district, uh, six of the members rated that as proficient and two rated that as exemplary. With an overall rating of the superintendent's performance, uh, five members rated that as proficient and three members rated that as exemplary. So if I, I could, uh, while I have the floor, I'd just kind of like to review probably some of my comments, um, and having, having worked as chair and having to deal with the, uh, superintendent sometimes on a daily basis, um, definitely speak to him a lot more than anybody who's done, gone through the chair. You, you do speak with the superintendent, uh, a fair amount during the course of the week and, you know, as a regular member, you sometimes don't realize what the chair is, is doing. So, you know, having gone through that, I will say my overall rating for the superintendent was exemplary, um, and I, I based that on a couple of the standards. I think, the way I feel, and I'm just trying to kind of sum it up for you, is I just feel that we have a superintendent who is really always on guard. I think when, when things do crop up, he's very, um, well-informed. I think he knows, he's got the pulse of the, the school. I think he knows what needs to be done, when it needs to be done. And there's a genuine concern. I, I don't feel that, um, it's just a job. I think it's really a, when you hold that position, I think it's more of a passion. You treat it like it's your own, and I mean that in a good way. I think that's, um, you know, you guide it and you trust it and you take care of it and you, you make sure that it, it prospers in, in that, in a sort of way. I find the superintendent to be strong in a lot of, um, aspects, and I think he's quoted me many times as saying, I think he knows a little bit about everything. And again, I mean that in a good way because he will, he is, um, engaged in, in so many different pieces of the puzzle, and I think he understands how all of it operates. And he may not have the final answer, but he will get you to that point. And I think that's important, just to know a little bit about everything and, and how, how the operation is supposed to run and, you know, to the optimal performance. I think I probably rated the, um, standard number two for management and operations. And under that, I, I also find that, um, there's some strong communication skills, uh, something that a lot of people, um, I find don't have in leadership roles. I got a lot of phone calls and, and emails or texts just bringing you up to speed on something that may be happening, something that you should be aware of, uh, something, you know, you should know before it comes out in, you know, say, social media. So a lot of different things, just to keep you aware of what, what was going on at the school. And I think that's, um, that's strong in a leader, just to have good communication skills, to be able to, um, keep you up to speed. And I say this too as a member because I, I feel even not doing the chairmanship, I think as, just as a committee member, I think we're all kept up to speed on, on most issues. You know, if you see something coming, you give somebody a heads up that this is coming down the road, just be alert and, you know, we'll deal with it as it, as it happens. And just, I had a quote from the fire service that, you know, one of the things that they always said is, um, it was 200 years of tradition unimpeded by progress. And I think what we have right now is times are changing so rapidly and the, the country is changing so rapidly and the, you know, the communities, you've got to really think out of the box. And I think that's what we've tried to, trying to have done here, is kind of think out of the box and not just do things because we've always done it. And in New England, we tend to be very steeped in tradition and we say, why are we doing that? Because that's the way we've always done it. And, and you just keep doing things for a hundred years, whether it works or not, you just keep doing it. And I think right now, what we find ourselves with Superintendent Watson is, uh, somebody who, who kind of thinks is a progressive thinker and is not just using the same mold year after year after year. I think, um, you know, we've, um, endorsed his changes and he wanted to make over the years, um, and I think he's led us down a, a pretty good path. I think things tend to be working out and, um, I think you, you just have to be a forward thinker like that. You just can't keep doing the same old thing year after year after year, so. Uh, for those reasons, um, I feel that we're very, uh, very fortunate to have a superintendent who I think genuinely cares about the school and pushing us down the right road, in the right direction, at the right time. And, um, I, I, again, I just think we're very fortunate. So those, those are my comments and I just wanted to justify them because we tend to get quoted by, oh, of course you think a person is exemplary or they're proficient. But what does that mean? Do you put any, um, you put anything behind that? And I think it's important that if you're going to rate somebody high or low, that you justify why you did that. You know, if you don't think somebody's doing a good job, you have an obligation to say that. When they do a good job, you should not only say it, but you should justify something, you know, put something behind it and why you, why you voted that way. And I think it's important that we explain when we give a rating like this. So, thank you for listening and, um, that's my presentation, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
I would just like to, uh, you know, thank the committee. First of all, thank you, Mr. Olivera, for all those kind words and, and I do this, you know, it's, it's what, it's what I think needs to be done and none of these things would be possible without the team that I, that we have. Uh, this isn't, this is not done by Mike Watson, okay? In fact, there are a lot more people with hands on the ground every single day that are, that are doing, doing work. And so none of it is possible without the support of the committee, uh, without the principal, without the team that's around us, without teachers, uh, custodians. Everybody plays a role in pushing the district forward. And, you know, my role is to make sure that the policymakers are kept informed of things that are, that are coming. And we can all do better, always, with communication. It's, it's an ongoing goal for every one of us. But I'm, I'm grateful for the committee's evaluation. I'm grateful, uh, from Mr. Olivera's remarks and I'm also grateful for the team that we're assembling as we try to embark on some, some really big work and challenging times, um, in our business. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. First reading for the adoption of the 2025-26 student handbook. A copy of the student handbook is included in your backup material. Recommendation that the district committee vote to adopt 1425-26 student handbook and this considered the first reading for adoption.
Make a motion that we, um, adopt the student handbook for 25-26.
Who has a second?
Second, give a comment. I looked it through, I didn't read everything, but I went through the reds and the yellows. You just saw on the school committee members, I know you have Wayne in red, he is vice-chair in red. I haven't been there yet, so am I, you're already out? No.
Short term.
Yeah, that was short term, by the way. There should be, and the yellow, there's no yellow on page eight. It's just say, for the new people, if you look at page eight, it just has the two reds, but.
We will get that accurate for the next one.
I wonder why they, you know, there are some things, some eyes to look at, but just that's a small.
We were awaiting today's.
Okay. Yeah, so we were just awaiting the final votes, uh, here on this and we will get that corrected. Our intention is to bring this back in August, uh, for a final approval. Much of this goes online, so you hopefully approve it at the August meeting and then we'll post it online. Any copies that we need would be sent out at that point.
Anything else, you kind of understood. No problem.
All right, do we have a motion? It was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any more discussion? Hearing none? Motion passes. Okay, vote to ratify the contract between Greater New Bedford Votec and the Teamsters Union Local Number 59. Request approval?
A motion to approve the Teamsters contract for 2025.
You have a second?
Ratify the contract between the Teamsters.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion?
No, I just wanted to advise the public that we have reached agreement on a three-year contract with the Teamsters. That's our custodial and maintenance unit. Appreciate the committee's support around that negotiations. As I said, uh, earlier, a very, uh, very efficient, uh, negotiation with the Teamsters, uh, that led to this agreement and, uh, grateful that we're going to be able to execute this before the expiration of the agreement. So I'll take a minute, Madam Chair, just to have the members sign. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Discussion on post-employment healthcare policies, Superintendent Watson.
Just want to hand out, uh, quickly, and again, this is for discussion purposes only tonight. We'll be taking this up again in August, but I wanted to kind of advise members, let you know where we are still talking. So as you know, we've been in some discussions with several groups around health insurance, uh, for the district. And as I've explained, and Pam is here to jump in if need be on some of these questions as well, we are looking at specifically post-employment benefits for employees that are not currently, uh, involved in the district. So you'll see on that draft that there are several areas that are highlighted. Those are still under discussion for the district. So on the front page, you'll see a very brief introduction that we wrote, as well as the current policy, what post-employment benefits look like for employees. And as you know, that is, uh, a topic of conversation with the, uh, employee labor unions. It is a sizable dollar value that is spent annually on post-employment benefits. And the fact that we're spending it on post-employment benefits, uh, you know, impacts our ability to deal with it with current employees. And so, uh, this is a long-term strategy. This is not an immediate strategy. I don't want folks who might be listening or here, we're not looking to change policy today for, you know, current retirees or employees in the district that are rapidly approaching retirement. This is about, uh, employees that are not currently employed by the district. And so our current draft, which you would see on the back page, are proposed policies for employees that would be hired from July 1st, 2025 and beyond. So even employees who are employed by the district don't take health insurance today would not be covered by our current draft of, of proposals, right? We're literally looking at this on the go-forward for folks that, that are not employed in the district today. Uh, and of course, that date would be subject to the committee's approval. It could be, you know, if we don't do this, if you want to do it in August and make it retroactive to July 1st, you'd be able to, but if you wanted to look forward, you'd also be able to do that as well. Areas that we're looking at are, you know, should an employee need to be enrolled for a period of time on the district's, uh, health insurance prior to retirement? That's not currently here. We've had some members of our team float the 10 years. There are other members of our team that believe that is too long, so we are having internal conversations about that. This is why this says draft on it. I just want to throw this out there for you guys to digest and be part of the conversation on. Cost sharing, uh, reimbursement rates, and also on the back page, uh, you know, what happens if a retiree passes away? How long does the spouse get to stay on the plan? If the spouse passes away, uh, and the, the retiree gets remarried, can the new spouse come on the plan? These are all things that exist on our current plan that we're looking to kind of, uh, address. In a little bit, Pam, maybe I might need your help on this one with the cost sharing coverage for reimbursement, but we currently are paying, uh, part of the Medicare Part B reimbursement for retirees. That's not common in every district, uh, across the Commonwealth and, and that does represent a, 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 a pretty significant, um, dollar value, right? That, uh, you know, might be part of a change that we might want to make, right? We would certainly carry employees up until they were Medicare eligible at 65, but at that point, push them, uh, onto the federal, federal government plan rather than the district continuing that coverage in perpetuity. So it's a very brief overview. I know we have a health insurance group that's been working on this, but I wanted to present something to you this school year on the work that we're doing around post-employment benefits, um, and to let you know that we do intend to continue this conversation, uh, over the summer into the fall with the hopes that at some point, the committee will adopt a change to the current practice, uh, and likely make it retroactive to July 1st, 2025, unless you folks choose a different, a different date. So that was all I wanted to get on the table today and get it out there, but I'm happy to answer any questions that members have, uh, related to this.
Any question? Say vote to designate equipment as surplus. Included in your backup material is a copy of the list of equipment to be designated as surplus. Request approval?
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Any discussion? Hearing none? Report on personal appointments, retirements or resignations to be received and placed on file. Number one, Pamela Smith, effective June 30th, 2026. Arminio Lopes, effective June 30th, 2026. Susan Sylvia, effective June 30th, 2026. Kai Shepard, excuse me, effective the end of the 25-26 school year. Cheryl Piazza, effective October 1st, 2026. And Stephen Flowers, effective June 11th, 2026.
Motion to receive and place on file. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Move on. Communications, the appointment of Karen Tredup for the Greater New Bedford Votec District School Committee. Retiree recognition luncheon, June 11th, 2025, 11:00 AM in the cafeteria. Hall of Fame, career achievement awards, August 8th, 2025, whites of Westport. Communication to Mount Vernon Group, May 16th, 2025. Communication to Raymond Design Associates, Inc., May 16th, 2025. Donation from the Sheridan Movers, May 2nd, 2025.
Just quickly, the time on the retire recognition luncheon has been changed to 11:45 AM tomorrow. The students will be dismissed at 10:49. Students will be dismissed at 10:49, there'll be lunch for the staff at 11:00. The retiree celebration, if anyone is coming, is at 11:45 tomorrow.
Committee discussion? Do we have any?
On the AP testing that they took, can you report that out in August? Just the pass rates.
Yes, for AP tests, for all AP exams.
If they just took them in, they won't get them until a couple of months.
Yes, coming soon, but we'll have them by August. Can we make a note of that, and we'll get the results of that? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Any other business that may probably come before? Not? Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.